My watch says 6:30, so we're going to go ahead and get started with our work session. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Belle Fine Barrow Council Work Session. This meeting, no council action or motions or approvals is taken during the work session. At this time, we will begin the meeting with...
You had forgot to stand padding the Senate here. Five hundred thirty-five. Five hundred thirty-five. Including the Senate.
I can't hear you.
Five hundred thirty-five, including the Senate.
Well, of course, our U.S. Congress consists of the Senate and the House of Representatives. So, of course, it would include 100 senators, two from each state, leaving 435 U.S. Representatives. That's correct. But, of course, it would include the senators. That was the... It's like a little educational thing.
Well, thanks, Ken.
Sure.
I'm making that...
Thanks for sending me that question.
There you go.
It's like a controversy over there, you two. I thought you were going to talk about the House.
We're going to move on to special presentations. Our next item is the 2023 budget. Lori?
Well, we put in... I'll start it off, but we did put in the spreadsheet for the general fund. This is the fund we usually struggle with the most. Maybe we'll talk a little bit about the EMS and the fire that came up in a couple of conversations. But primarily, I think we were about 86,000 short or...
And I got it down. I went through, I have eleven months of good numbers. I worked, reworked it, got it down to 79.5.
Seventy-nine five.
So, basically, 80,000.
Yeah, about 80,000. Now, you know, there's a couple of ways we can handle that. It's not the best idea, but we do have reserves from this year we can carry over and use that to avoid a tax increase. We would like to try to get the number down a little bit, or as much as we can, maintain the same level of services if we can. That's always important. But if we can, we like to get the number down so that if we do decide to use reserves, it's as, you know, a small amount as possible. So, we could talk about a couple of areas that have come up at the last couple of meetings that may be easier or low-hanging fruit to deal with. One of those items right off the top was the retreat. I believe it was, you know, we scheduled, I think, or budgeted, was it five or six thousand?
Six thousand.
Six thousand? And from what I remember hearing, it sounded like we could try to do that kind of work in a work session and avoid spending $6,000 for a facilitator. So, that would be an easier way of saving 6,000. A couple of other areas that have come up is the...
It's only 5,000, something.
5,000?
That's last year, so I did take it out. Because we... That's it.
That's why I said no.
Okay.
Yeah, because we...
Well, we did, then maybe, and of course, yeah, Lori got that we were about, as I said, about 86 or 85. We're getting the numbers down, so we already took that out. Another area, you know, we talked about a couple of times in the fall was the dual memberships in, well, the memberships in Pennsylvania Municipal League and the membership in the Boroughs Association. You recall the membership in the Pennsylvania Municipal League was a trial basis for five years. We're probably in the third or fourth year where, you know, the numbers are getting up there a little bit. I think they're about 1,800 a year.
So, last, this year, it was almost 1,500. Next year, it's almost 1,800. It's going to go up $272.
So, that's a topic, you know, for discussion. I'm sure Randy has some notes, or I'm sure there's other areas that would be considered low-hanging fruit. We try to maintain, you know, the same level of services, whether it's CADA, the same contribution to the library. All those are pretty much in line to be about the same. But, you know, same operations, hourly coverages for police services, all that is right now scheduled to stay the same. Any other areas I'm forgetting?
My biggest one is I had a question about the PML.
Okay.
I didn't know how... I know that was a topic, and so I had a note about that.
Sure.
I still think it's a good idea to stay in a five-year trial. I think this should live for five years.
That's up to...
And it's, like you said, it's only, it is a small amount compared to the rest of the budget.
It's up for members to talk about.
We're doing it now, or are we doing it...
Yeah, you can discuss it. We're going to approve a tentative budget. It's on the agenda in the regular meeting, and then we'll advertise accordingly. And it still can be tweaked at the next meeting, but we're planning on voting on a budget at the next meeting.
Well, I'm...
We didn't advertise it tonight.
It is advertised, yeah. It will be advertised, yes.
So, I'm in favor of getting out of PML for a couple of reasons. One, it is the money. It is more expensive than PSAB. I think we get more things free through PSAB with their webinars, the things that you can come down here and watch them. You don't have to go anywhere. You can do it locally, but there are charges for the meetings that they hold twice a year or workable. At this point, we only have one person attending PML, and with that money, we could maybe spend, send two or three more people from council to a PSAB meeting.
And I believe the PML overall has better... I think part of the reason people don't go to the PML or attend the meetings is because the leadership likes PSAB, and you keep putting down the PML. And as a result, you don't see the good quality programs that they have. That's why when I went to the PML conference, I spent all that time doing those detailed notes to see, to just show you an example of the kinds of programs they have that were, I thought, were very, very helpful. I have not seen that level of detail from every time, sometimes, but from PSAB.
Again, you know, I'm going to go back to the duplication part. That's what we've been working with with the folks in Harrisburg, and that was their recommendation, was to reduce duplication where we can, and that's another part of this that I think makes sense.
I looked at that, that which was attached, that was two or three weeks ago when you handed it over back. There's a lot of overlap, and I could see where, if we come out cost-neutral in terms of where your figures benefit from the PML, but I don't think we do.
When it comes to that, the other thing is, the PML, I think, is geared more toward larger boroughs and cities than the PSAB. And when you look at the legislative actions that they're both asking for, for the state legislatures, they're pretty much on line to be the same thing. I sort of agree with Randy that if we save, what is it, six, 1,800 bucks, it's about, it costs us about $1,000 a person with registration and hotel fees for PSAB, we could send another one or two people. I think it's pretty valuable, the networking that goes on there. Not to say that the networking at the PML is not important. I just see a lot of overlap in the two. So, I know with our current council, we have, at least Ralph is on the trustees, I think. Randy's, what's your position, Randy?
Director.
Yeah, and Barbara's on the Committee for Making the Legislative...
Yes, yes.
...thingies like you are on. So, I think we have three people involved in that.
And I'm on the Regional Vice Chair for PML.
Well, there you go, yeah, yeah. So, I did have a conversation at the last, I think I told you this, the last PSAB fall meeting with trustee, I think he was, and we talked, chatted about comparisons, and he sort of agreed that they are quite similar. He actually was in both of them. He's in PSAB and...
He's from Chambersburg.
Yeah. So, I was surprised that he was sympathetic or understood why we might, might not be part of it next year. If you read through that document, it's lengthy, and I can't cite it right now. I'm not going to bring it up. It's pretty similar. I think there's a lot of sustainability stuff in PM...
The MEL is not...
Yeah, that's, that's not in PSAB. But I think that's going to fall into place, Joy, and from, not necessarily from PML or PSAB, but from the federal government and the state government are going to create mandates for us to follow. So, that's just my opinion for right now. I guess I'm in sort of, 1,800 isn't a lot, but we might be able to use it towards something else. So, I sort of think I would vote to withdraw this time.
Any other discussion on this particular item?
I've also attended some of the PSAB meetings, and I've found them incredibly valuable, particularly as someone who is new to council. And I would echo what both of you said, and also, Doug, I agree with you thoroughly that networking is where the real, for me, where the real learning has taken place there. And I think it's, I think it's very important. I looked at some of the things with PML, and from what I could read, I think it is definitely for bigger municipalities and for cities. And I feel like PSAB is a better fit for us.
Anything else on these two items? If not, we'll move to the next one.
Would it be inappropriate to ask for a staff their opinions, or is that something we shouldn't consider?
Well, I don't want to, you know, obviously, it's divided.
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, we've all, we've attended both sides of PML events...
No problem.
...in Boroughs Association events. I just would say what Barbara said, you know, it's a networking is very, very important.
Okay, there are more? We can move on from that one.
So, I just wanted to pass along that we got the rates from the refuse, Center County Recycling and Refugees, and so they are increasing their rates. So, as a direct pass-through, their recycling is going up $2.25 a month, and their refuse, their tipping fee is going up. So, it's going to increase the refuse cost $35 a year or $2.92 a month. And all that is, is a direct pass-through. They don't bill the customers. They bill us, and we bill the customers. So, all it is, is passing along what our increases are. That's the refuse. Yeah, that's refuse.
But that's not, that wasn't on the...
No, but I just wanted to pass that along, that we got their final rates and that that was going to happen. So, that's, that's, it's not that we needed the increase. It's that they're increasing what they're billing us, so we're, pass it directly through. So, it's an increase of $27 a year for recycling and $8 a year for refuse.
So, we'll show that on the fee schedule at the next meeting. Doesn't have anything to do with taxes. It'll show up on our fee schedule.
But I just wanted to let you know that that came through, so that's just a kind of an FYI.
So, at the authority meeting, we have to approve that increase?
No, we're only garbage. So, we deal with, the authority deals with water and sewer, but council will approve the fee schedule at the meeting, our meeting on the 19th.
Center County Refugees and Recycling has their own authority fee. They're the ones that voted for the increase, and then they just let us know, hey, here's your cost for the following year, your tipping fee, your recycling fee, et cetera. So, we just had, we make the change to our fee schedule, and then when you get your quarterly bill, you will see an increase, and it'll be because...
Not because of us. It's because we're passing it through.
Exactly. Like, we didn't need an increase at all, but when their rates go up, and that's a good bit, so we'll just pass it through. If they bill the customers directly, it wouldn't involve us, but they don't, so...
I just want to mention, for what it's worth, you know, we're a population of over 5,000. Once you have that population level, you're mandated to recycle. It's not something that we can just have an option to do or not do. With the state mandates we provide, we take part in the recycling program. Either we do it ourselves, or we do it through Center County Refugees and Recycling, but we have no choice but to do it.
Did I include a tip fee as well?
Yes.
The tipping, yeah. Their tipping went up.
What was the eight dollars? I thought that was...
Eight dollars usually.
Yeah, $8 per ton, so...
Based on all of these numbers we've been doing, that Julie put on the Excel spreadsheet, how did that impact this budget? The, we've been working, we were...
What's the priority budgeting?
Yeah.
That hasn't impacted my side as much as it will impact what you decide. It gives you a decision tool that if you want to cut, here's what scored the lowest.
And again, just a reminder, we only used it this time around, the general fund. We didn't look at refuse or any other funds, just the general fund. You know, and it was the first year, and, you know, we know it was a learning curve for all of us. We're also, we don't have all the data points established yet, so it's somewhat fragmented in the information we have to look at. But if you want to dig into it, you know, we could set some time at the next meeting. If you want, if you, say you wanted to get away with not using any reserves and no tax increase, then that would be the place to look to find out. Yeah, well, to try to trim some services or programs, that's the place to look.
So, this is interesting. I'm just...
Not everybody has filled it out yet, obviously, but it looks like the lowest, the ones of least importance, if you took the average of those they've had, are professional memberships, administrative vehicle costs... No, wait a minute. Here's one, cemetery costs. The cost for the cemetery is the lowest of everything.
Yeah. Do you want me to give you a summary of what we're faced with?
Yeah.
Under the state, under Borough Code, if we don't maintain or help keep them afloat, we would end up taking over the cemetery. So, I mean, what we've been doing for at least 10 years, maybe 15...
Since I've been here. Since I've been here.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
We used to have a person that we paid to bring in the inmates on Saturdays. That was done for many, many years. Now that we have the Volunteers Association or the Cemetery Association, now they've got that up and got a fairly good staff and running. We're not having to do that anymore, but we are supporting them in a lot of different ways.
Of course, you know, the inmates help cut the grass now. That was a savings and we were affected by COVID. So that threw things off schedule. We used some of our personnel for a couple of years.
Exclusively.
Exclusively. I think a while back, under the borough code, we were limited to either two or three thousand dollars, but I believe that was amended. There's no, you can go above that now. But we, we struggle, you know, to put a little bit of money into that area to keep them afloat. It's still owned by an association, but if we don't keep, if they do go into financial distress, we would be forced to take it over and maintain it as a borough property.
The cost, if that were to happen, would go from the three thousand dollars that we spend now to probably forty thousand.
Yeah.
I'm shocked that that actually ended up that low because.
That was the very lowest one. There's nothing else lower than that. Because we get a lot of complaints.
Doesn't look great. I can tell you, we get a lot of phone calls.
It's one of the, it's one of the issues where we do get a ton of phone calls. If it, if we go a week, especially in May, once you start getting grass growing up around the headstones, we start getting tons of calls.
We do.
As far as administrative vehicles, we have bad news. Our used Ford Explorer, the one that was actually.
You mean our two thousand four?
Two thousand, the two thousand nine. The transmission reverse went out about a week ago.
It didn't go backward.
That's what I said.
It's like the only turn one?
You know, it's not worth, it goes about a three thousand dollar item to replace. It's not worth putting that kind of money into the vehicle. So we'll probably put it out, eventually put it out for the municipal bid. But as you know, vehicles are expensive and are even hard to find. So we always look at the, like the state auctions or federal government auctions to see if we can find something. So that's kind of what we started to do. Professional memberships, we have probably the bare minimum membership cost of probably most municipalities in Center County. I'd like to say that has a professional staff. We've always been on the low end of that. And I would challenge anybody to check to see what I'm saying. We don't go to conferences unless they're paid for by the association. We hardly ever join anything because of the costs. So I don't know how it could get much lower, but we could look at it.
Anything else? I got, I have a couple. Hang on. And your overtime wages for police, it's four-ten, about one-eighty. Is that, the sixty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars proposed, is that an estimate?
It is, but I know. In the proposed contract, which I'm not going to say too much about because it's not finished, but there's some changes in there. So we're estimating at fifty-three this year. So given that they're going to get raises and everything else, I figured it would probably go up. I don't know how much, but that's my guess.
Okay, because I looked at that and I thought that almost, almost doubles where we're at right now.
Well, we're at fifty-three.
If we're at thirty-five and we go up to sixty-two, it's around them.
I, I budgeted thirty-five, but we had fifty-three because we thought it would come down, but it didn't.
So my point here is, this is, this is an area that I think we can manipulate a little bit based on the overtime because we don't know when that overtime is going to occur. And maybe there are situations that, that needs to be, you know, we give them what we, you know, I'm, I'm saying we, we change that proposal to forty-two thousand and pull twenty thousand back in and put it in the budget somewhere or hold it somewhere for needs or capital or whatever.
You would just reduce your current deficit by twenty.
Yeah. And so then they would have to figure out, you know, if they're going to pay the overtime, they'll need to figure out in their budget where they're going to pull that money from.
We can, I can do whatever you want.
That's my suggestion.
Yeah, that, there would have to be, you know, some parameters put in place. Otherwise, we're going to be twenty thousand short on that number.
Right.
What I understood, we talked about earlier, but I don't, I don't see it here in the budget. And this is kind of going back on here, is that if we do have overtime with the police and it's due to nonprofit services, would it be considered at least doing a minimal pain of back so that we can help it? And I don't see that having been added.
We're going to discuss that probably with the fee schedule and the special event application, hopefully by the next meeting. But it, being the first year, we don't want to budget, you know, without really, it'd be an estimate, an estimate of recouping some costs in regard to that overtime. But it's hard to estimate because we, again, we weren't tracking how much specific time they were putting in towards an event. You know, we didn't have that data at the beginning of this year.
Have they been tracking it at all since we first came up with that?
We, we've started to try to get it in place so that, you know, we have some good numbers.
A minimal enough amount of data to give a guesstimate. It's not an estimate, but just a guesstimate for next year. That we could then add back into here to help offset some of that.
Well, I would hate to do that, Joanne, because we could give numbers to all the special events and then they may say, well, we're not going to do the event. You know, then we wouldn't, maybe we wouldn't have the cost involved. But I would say, give us a year of getting some good numbers, estimating, giving, we'll give you estimates of what the cost would be to each nonprofit if they want an hour of service or what have you. But we hate to use kind of an unknown number for budgeting purposes.
And I don't get the feeling that's going to be a huge number.
I wouldn't think it's huge.
I think a lot of their overtime, from what I've understood with what we've talked about before, is court time or they're covering shifts where they don't.
Where they have an injury or something.
They've had a guy off with an injury for months. So that's certainly added to overtime.
I would just like to just concur in what Ralph said. My thought would be that instead of, and an alternative to doing that where you're backing out funding that you have for overtime, that you're really just budgeting based on historical data, that's probably somewhat accurate. I think you would be better off leaving it in, using the seventy thousand dollar deficit that you have. As Lori proposed, just use reserves. I mean, the exact same thing happened this year. She's carrying over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars that's going into reserves. So basically what you're doing is you're using a portion of that one-fifty-three to cover some of these costs this year. Same thing might, if, if what Randy says comes to fruition, which let's hope that it does, and there's twenty thousand dollars less in overtime next year, well, Lori's going to have that twenty thousand in reserves to carry over. You know, so to me, you would be just better off staying.
What you're saying is just leave this as it is. What we have here, don't make no changes.
Yes.
And then if we need the reserves, we use them. If we don't.
You are going to use a portion of the reserves to balance this budget. You know, seventy-nine thousand, as Lori said. But that's not all, I mean, that's still leaving you sixty thousand, that's still, that's going into the overall reserve fund that she has.
Right, but, but there are some things in here that are going to be under budget, correct? Even though we've, so like what Randy, Randy's example, they, we may be twenty thousand dollars, we don't know.
We don't know, it's an estimate, it's a plain spending.
Right, that's what a budget, budget is.
But at least in this scenario, that if you leave the funding, the budget based on, you know, previous estimates, then you're not going to be, you're not going to have the shortfall that Ralph was talking about.
So if we leave this exactly as it is, don't make any changes than what Lori has made up to this point. And so we wouldn't be backing out on any of these other things that we've already discussed. We have the reserves there just in case and we'll see what happens, basically.
Well, that, but I mean, you can still back some things out and not use as many reserves. I think that's what we're discussing.
Yes, you can.
If you want.
If you want to, I mean, that's where we started with the first comments. You can leave it as is, leave everything in, or reduce some of the carryover, the reserve use as a little bit of a cushion and maintain all the services that you have.
How unusual is it to have that, that number in reserve? How many years you've been in budgets, is that a good number?
That's a high number, yeah. That's a high number this year. I don't have a crystal ball.
No.
I, I can't, these numbers, if fair money, I'm going to come in right on target, I'll be surprised.
But the reserve number, the reserve number is accurate. And then the money you're talking about having in reserves is, is a known number.
Is pretty close, is pretty close. We have one month to go yet. I don't, again, I don't know, we could have a freak snowstorm, the dump truck could blow, like I don't know that stuff. But given what we know now, it's going to be relatively close. So you have a carryover. The other thing is we pulled back pretty hard on the revenue because they're talking about a downturn in the housing market and that we're going into a recession. So we were very, very conservative on our revenue numbers. They could come in higher as well.
Which would be a real benefit to us.
Right.
And we think, actually, we think that's more than likely to happen, but.
Right, well, that's, that's a good reason to do it.
But we're cautious.
That's hopeful, then.
Right, we're very, very cautious for next year because it, this year has been really tough because everything's been all over the board. When I started this, our gas prices, well, they thought things were going to go well, then they went back up. The stock market was doing crap, now it's gone back up, like it's.
It went down today.
Yeah. It's just been a hard year because I, you know, like, I don't know what gas prices are going to do next year anymore than anybody else. So I did a ten percent increase, which is a lot. I don't think I've ever done that before. But to be cautious, and maybe that's not enough, and maybe it's way too much, but I don't know.
I'm going to go down through my list here some more, because I, this is what I do in the Monday afternoon. Police material, four-ten, two-forty-two, proposed increase for twenty-three is from four thousand dollars to eighty-five thousand. Again, it doubles. And I don't understand why it doubles, but Lori, I'll let you answer that. But I, what I prepared is was change it to seven thousand and save fifteen hundred.
Do you want to take each item? Do you know what it, what they put in for materials?
Well, he had in some extra stuff, I think teaser thing. Sounds with us a thousand. And there are ammos in there and ammunition went sky high during COVID. So rather than pull it back down.
That's fine, I just checked.
I left it there. I think he did talk last time about ammunition is still really high.
Yeah, I know he did. Then the next one is forty-five, three-twenty-two, it's, gets on police, but it's the parking, parking lot EV.
What number?
Four-four-five, three-two-one.
Oh, it's in parking.
Yeah.
So it's at the end of the four-nineteen.
It's basically the parking lot EV charging expense and then I have four-four-five-point-four-five-oh, which is the parking lot EV expense. That totals fourteen hundred dollars for an expense. I'm asking, can we flip this into fees and make it a revenue to cover those costs?
I, my understanding was because we used a grant to put them in, we couldn't charge a fee, is that not correct?
I have to go back and read that, Lori, I'm not sure off the top of my head. But if we were to do it, we, I know when we, we talked at one point about setting up some meters just to cover the expense of the electricity.
There is a meter thing that the airport was looking at, that there's a monthly subscription fee and the cost of the unit.
I was just thinking of regular, our parking meters.
Like a flat fee of some sort for, to park in that.
Right.
Park in that.
That's in addition to parking in the payment kiosk.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you're plugged in, you use the meter.
And the kiosk.
That would see.
That's something I think we wouldn't, I think it's a good idea. I think we needed to check with the Utilities Commission because they were the ones that were limiting what we could and couldn't do with fees.
Other municipalities have said you can charge anything.
Yeah, I think that's been, I think that's been.
Years ago.
We can put that on the fee schedule if that's what you choose to do.
And then on, probably costs us fourteen hundred on installing.
And then they, they charge us every month, it is phenomenal.
I think it pays out.
Right.
Then I have four-fourteen, three-eighty-four, I might, I might be confused, I'm not sure, help me out on this one. Contracted service and planning observing, spent nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-six and was increased to twenty-eight. Was that due to a change?
Yeah. Or it was in wages and now it's not, so that's all.
And that, that works out, then. And then. And then there was other increases for legal, four-fourteen dot three-fourteen, zoning and planning. Twenty-two, twenty-two budget was a hundred dollars and the proposed budget for twenty-three is ten thousand dollars.
Because we're not sure what's going to happen with the rental stuff. So we thought we would be cautious with that. Just in case. If it doesn't happen, you have ten thousand dollars. If it does, we're covered.
The last one I have then is the four-thirty dot three-five-one, commercial insurance of twenty-twenty-two is eighty-five-hundred. Twenty-three budget increased to sixteen thousand.
So the insurance companies give us rates and we changed insurance companies. So what they charge changes, like one, we've had, I've had ones where they've put an emphasis on workers' comp and we took, paid way more. And another one seemed to put more emphasis on commercial. So their rates changed, that's what the number that they gave me.
But the overall package was less.
Right, the overall package was less, but how they, they actually break it out into all the categories for me. And even workers' comp, they have like, there's a police rate, an office rate, an outdoor workers' rate. And those rates can change and so I go by what they give me.
And we go by the total number, we don't break it up for, for this much to this agent and so on.
So and they, when we change companies, I can't tell you that they do it exactly the same. All I can say is this is the number they gave me. So how they classify things might be different.
That's all I have. Give it to somebody else now.
Good questions.
Yes.
Any other questions for Lori on the budget?
Is it general budget or any budget?
Any part of it at this point.
Okay, in that case.
We only have the general budget here, but.
Because I had a parks and rec question.
Well, sure.
Let me find it, hold on a second. On the parks budget line, four-five-one, three-seven-six, park improvements. I was going to suggest we add twenty thousand and then underline three-ninety-two, oh-nine-five, which is transfer ins and outs and that's from the capital projects. This would be for a, a guesstimate on how much it would cost to make a, a transition wall on the, of stones between the concrete and the dry stack stones so that we have, that we do what the foundation letter, we said to have a, a demarcated transition area between this concrete and thing. And we don't know, and you said last time that we didn't know if Penn Dull was, was going to pay. They did agree that they, they would look into the historic preservation part of redoing that wall.
We're going to talk about.
We're gonna talk about that in the regular meeting.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is, that's, this is one way to help. If we end up having to pay something, I'm thinking it might be $20,000.
We can discuss it in the meeting, the two options, there's no cost to the two options they gave us.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be parks, that wouldn't fall under.
I think it'd fall under streets.
Okay.
It would be the general fund.
Which is the general fund.
Okay.
So, then you're, if you do that, you're upping your, what?
Going backward.
Just see now.
Any other thoughts, Council, on the budget?
Again, we're gonna advertise a tentative budget, you know, it's for public inspection. It can still be tweaked at the next meeting, but we will have to make up, make decisions that night. I know we talked about EMS, or EMS has asked for an increase for a few years in a row. We bumped it up a little bit, but right now, unless we hear differently, we're leaving it the same as it has been for 2022.
So, if we're doing that, I saw the number seem to be a little bit higher. I was assuming that that was, that we're giving a slight increase.
Well, no, I think it's based on the millage rate revenue.
That's a quarter of a mill.
It's coming in a little bit more, is that correct?
So, what, actually, what's happening is, we're starting, it's a brand-new fund, essentially. I think this is gonna be the third year.
Third year, yeah.
We're starting now, the first year, we had no delinquent taxes. We're getting more years of delinquent taxes that we're collecting a little bit more revenue on, so that's what the little bit of increase that it was, is that we're.
Oh, so it's not a, okay.
It's not, there is no tax increase in the budget as it is now. You can change that, it's just that there isn't one right now. If you wanna change anything, you let us know when you enact it, and we'll make the changes. But there is no increases anywhere, except, actually, the only thing is, is the refuse right now, aside from what else we'll get into in the fee schedule, but there's no tax increase.
So, I'll throw a wrinkle into that one, because I'm still pushing for the .5 mil on, for the fire department. I think, in my memory, there has been no increases in the fire budget over the last four or five years, and these costs continue to go up big time, especially apparatus, equipment, whether it's gloves, boots, coats, that type of thing. And I understand, you know, when the agreement was made, there was a 3% thing that everybody would pay into, but I think because that 3% got away from some of the higher costs that have come up through the years, we haven't been able to keep up with that particular 3%, it was always, like, we got to a point where it was, it was 3%, but you don't make any money, you got enough to cover your butt, but that's about it. And I think the fire department deserves more than that, it's one of our main public public services that we have out there, and they're important, and they're volunteer. Nobody's getting paid at this point, but if we continue not having enough money, eventually we're gonna be paying for it. And the longer we can carry this, I think the better it is for Belfont.
I would just add, because I know we talked about it a couple of times, and some of you are new, there is a fire, a budget that was approved by the supporting municipalities on a formula. I think this discussion should be taken to the Fire Executive Board, whatever they're called now, and if the Board decides or agrees, based on the membership, that the fire company's, fire department's budget should increase, I think that would be positive if all the partners agreed, then come back and tell us how much our share of the budget is going, how much it's gonna be, and we can add in the tax to pay for it. Otherwise, we would be paying more than our fair share, based on this formula that was agreed upon by all the partners. I think the argument is over under the Fire Executive Board, not here.
Well, I'm coming to you from the Board, suggesting that they requested an increase.
What did the partners say?
We didn't talk, we, this was for the, basically, this was just for the Belfont Tax Fund.
But we, so, you're asking your fellow council members to pay more than agreed upon percentage on a formula?
Well, let me put it this way, the reason, we go so long, every time we talk about this, and we've talked about it for a couple of years.
Yes.
Every time we do, it's too late, we can't get to the other partners, it's too late for them, we've gotta, we'll have to wait till 2024, or 2023, and that, then that won't pass till 2024.
I'm asking.
If it passes, well, then, that's fine, Ralph, that's the way we'll do it.
You ask your fellow council members if they wanna pay more than their fair share based on a formula every municipality agreed to. Ask them in the regular meeting, and we'll put it in the budget for 2023 if you guys approve it. Approve it as a tentative budget, we'll put it in, and you guys can decide on December 19th. It's just that simple.
It gets tiresome doing it, and we try, the borough doesn't wanna, doesn't wanna meet with, because it's a contract between the borough and the townships, yet the police, the fire department's getting thrown in the middle of it to take care of it.
There really isn't a contract, it's an agreement between the three parties.
Yes.
And the Fire Executive Committee should be sitting down beginning in July to start talking about their budget. And to me, the issue is, and I said this at the last meeting, the issue may come up more with the fact that they're blocking more than a 3% increase. If the fire department needs more, then the municipalities all have to agree to pay whatever that increase is, but there's one municipality that kind of says, we're not paying more than 3%. So, what's the option? Come back to the other two and say, okay, you two pay more than this municipality? That's not fair to the borough residents.
I get you, I get it.
The reason we went to, the reason we went to a formula, Randy, is, I'm not gonna name names or townships or anything, but we had trouble getting the same payment year after year, because at a whim, they would say, we're not paying you. And you, the fire companies suffered, they didn't have the funds they needed. So, we finally, after three or four years of meetings, we finally got to a formula everybody would agree to.
So, it sounds like it is back at the Fire Board, they need to figure that out.
Look at the signatures on the agreement, that's all I can tell you.
The whole Executive Board came out of these three or four years of meetings, the revamping of the Board, the formula, how the assessed values would be figured out, looked at each year, and then get out to the municipalities. It really has to go back there.
But there'd been cross. When this come up before, a few of the people from, from the Fire Exec went to these meetings, they never told, don't go to those meetings, because we don't wanna lose anybody that's already in the group. And that, so, you know, and that might've been six years, five years, and it's only been about that long for this. But anyway, that's the story I get from them, and I'm trying to support them the best I can, but.
Sure. I understand.
Yeah.
I keep getting thrown this ring, and I understand what that is. So, we'll see what we can do next year, because I don't know if I wanna fight a battle, it's useless at this point. Even if, even if we would do it, we would have to go into next year and try to get them to come up with us.
For real estate, yes. Now, other, other townships may be able to pay it out of their general fund, we can't. We have a special tax for fire costs in the borough.
And then people still should know, too, that we're working off assessments from 1995.
Yes.
So, you know, we got a new giant coming into a better township.
Yes.
That's gonna, that's gonna be reverted back to 1995.
Yes.
Those assessments are updated every year, aren't they, Lori?
Yeah, but the value.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes.
But I, I mean, they're only using the assessment to establish a percentage.
Yes, yes.
Right, but I think when you build a new building, that particular property is reassessed.
Yes.
That will be to 2022, and not in 1995, if they, there's not collateral to reconstruction or major improvements.
It is an increase in revenue, but the assessed value is 1994 levels.
Yes, I understood, they reassess those properties that are brand new, that's why, that's why there's such a mess.
I don't believe so, because it would be unfair.
Exactly.
So, they don't do it that way.
But I, what I'm saying is, I'm not sure that is even relevant, because all it determines is a percent. The percent, the Fire Executive Board establishes their budget, and those percents determine how much we pay and the other two municipalities pay, so.
Yes.
You know, eventually, we might be down at 10% because we can't grow.
Because the other places are growing when they're making, they're getting more tax revenue, so, yes.
So, all we'll be paying is 10% of whatever they decide their budget is.
Yes.
You know, or whatever, whatever it may be, but.
So, I'm confused now, are you saying that this formula is based on the population?
No, assessed values of buildings.
Buildings.
In the zone, in the firefighter zone.
So, with more development in the other two municipalities.
Which is up there.
Her numbers, that's why you see.
And this, ours percentage goes down.
It's been doing that, it's been doing that, probably would've been in this, what, eight to 10 years?
Oh, Lord, yeah.
And ours can, ours just is slowly dropping while the others is going up, because that's where the growth is.
Okay.
And Randy suggests that we keep paying more to supplement the other townships and.
It's not to supplement the other townships, it's to supplement the fire department.
Well, nobody doesn't wanna supplement the fire departments, Randy.
I understand that, I understand.
What we wanna do is understand.
Kind of an.
What we wanna do is understand how it's supposed to be divided up, and as a new person, I can completely understand what's going on here. These other townships are growing, these police, or these firemen have to respond more frequently and more, in more distance, those townships should be paying more, so what you're asking us to do isn't the whole story, that's all we're saying. I mean, I completely understand it, Randy, you're frustrated, you're passionate about it, so are we, so are we. We want the firemen to be funded, and we want them to have the best boots and equipment that Belfont residents can provide. Stop making it sound like it's our fault.
I didn't say it was.
Okay.
I just said, I was putting it in for the Belfont budget.
Yeah, well, there's more than that, it's an executive committee, which you didn't mention, so we, nobody doesn't wanna fund the firemen, nobody. We just have to understand it completely.
I said, I agree, go with that.
Very good, because we all should agree.
Everyone take a break until 7:30. If everybody's done. Yeah, we'll talk about that during the meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Welcome everybody to the Bellefonte Borough Council meeting. We'll do our best to start our meetings on time and end on time. The room acoustics, please speak up. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving a banner to be hung two weeks in advance on the event, of the event on the Veterans Bridge during Christmas. I'll call for a motion at second to allow free parking during Victorian Christmas. Cletton, discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. Does this motion include the, the red parking spaces which are permitted parking spaces?
Because that's not the metered spaces.
I just want to make that clear to the public that it doesn't include those.
Because they're still figured as permitted parking.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to allow free parking during Victorian Christmas, beginning Friday, December ninth at six P.M. and ending on Saturday, December tenth at noon, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next item is a invitation from Giant Foods for their grand opening. It's Friday, December sixteenth. I think like at seven forty in the morning, pretty early. It's there for your review and consideration. There's no council action required.
Except to tend. Get a free bag if you're, more like the first two hundred people, something like that.
Next item is a letter from the Bellefonte Historic Preservation Foundation with a suggestion for the waterfront wall repair. This was part of SR one fifty, South Water Street, where the wall was, actually collapsed. It has been temporarily repaired.
So that comes up under all business as well?
It does say, take, may take action. So we're not going to do anything here?
No, we can do it, we'll just do it all at one time.
Okay.
And revisit it. On the consent agenda, I had sent in, sent in some revisions and Joanne sent some in. So we'll pull council meeting minutes of November twenty-first.
I'll move to do the other two items. John, we have to remove them from the table. So I'll motion to remove from the table.
Okay, well, second?
Second.
So it's been removed and now you have a motion to approve.
We have to vote to remove from table.
That was Joanne in the second.
Okay, all those in favor to remove the, the items from table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Now I will make a motion to accept these two items on the consenting agenda.
That was Joanne.
For the second?
For the second, I, Cletton?
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Here we go. So on, on Joanne's changes are on pages one, four, and five. And on page one, under public comment, it was Doug Barnett, who says, a resident of the community spoke. But it was Mr. Doug Barnett, a Bellefonte community member. On page four, and it's so, it was four or five, the random seventy-five residence was crossed out and households was added. And then the motion below, what was added there would be that discussion included stating, stating a deadline for responses would be one month after the spring newsletter is mailed out and the survey to the households be mailed out in January after the online survey version is complete. And then on page five, Mr. Toasty Basie suggested that the permanent repair include facing, the facade with stones rather than slab of concrete for historic preservation. This is in relation to the RCH one fifty. There's no action requested. Bemir motion and Cletton second to have, to have staff review and approve the bid. That was in there. And... Toasty Basie, let's see, we got the project, this is the post where we have the banners hanging, hanging right now which are getting, not supporting enough, have enough support to keep the banners straight. The project can be considered, any, you know, the project can be considered in a new motion and put up new polls for, during a vote in approval. So apparently there was some language missing in that one. And then in mine, on page four, with, again, under the climate action plan, the motion was carried. That's ended there and I just added, there was one name, a Mr. Bemir. And under C, CMPO, I added, motion by Ms. Toasty Basie, second by Mr. Deet Johnson to add commitment to find a way to address critical issues. I think it was comment and committee. I think two came in there two different ways, so. And then the last page, under adjournment, executive session to follow, we added to discuss personnel evaluations and agreement issues. So those are the current changes. Are there any other revisions or changes to the minutes? If you ever have a question, go to Cena because it'll tell you. Just have to sit there and pick out what you're looking for.
It helps.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. The minutes as amended.
Okay. Second?
Second, Dan.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Council meeting is November twenty-first.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. So that brings us to Gina Thompson.
No mayor.
No, sorry. I keep, I even have a circle. I even have a circle. Make that sometime, a couple of years and I'll make that a trivia question. Mr. Mayor?
For tonight's mayor spotlight, I would just like to spotlight Victorian Christmas, which will be this weekend. I know Mr. Brighton Ball was just here. He must have stepped out. He's put a lot of time and effort into this. It's just one of the, the grand events that Bellefonte community puts on. You can visit belfontvictorianchristmas.com to get a list of all the activities. It's going to be a great weekend in Bellefonte for Victorian Christmas. So we hope to see you all out. And thank you to everybody who puts all their time and energy into making this such a great community event. So thank you, everybody who has put the time in for that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. I just have a couple of updates for planning. We will have our final planning commission meeting next Monday, December twelfth at five P.M. We don't have any plans to review, but we'll just have some organizational conversation. And I do want to discuss with the planning commission some possible ordinance amendments and zoning fee changes that, you know, you guys will then get information on after I have a conversations with them. We do have two upcoming vacancies on the planning commission. Mark Edwards has submitted a volunteer application to, for reappointment and Dallas Gallo doesn't intend to seek reappointment. So if you're, know of anybody that is interested in joining the planning commission, we do have a vacancy. I mean, technically we have two, but, so we have a vacancy there. In terms of HARB, we will meet next Tuesday for our final meeting there as well. Couple of projects for review and again, organizational items. Again, I want to mention to the, for the public certification that we have two upcoming vacancies for HARB. We have a licensed real estate broker seat and a alternate as well. So Pat Long is willing to continue as our real estate broker, but she's also wanting to allow someone else to step into that role if they're interested in that as well. And then I didn't put this on the actual agenda because I wasn't sure whether it was, whether council should act on it tonight. I guess you can at the next meeting. But I did want to propose to council to consider using the Center Region Code Housing Appeals Board rather than our own. And I explained in my memo that it's really been a struggle over the years to find people to sit on that board. We also don't meet very often. It's just been a handful of times since Code has taken over as our, as our contracted code agency. Right now, we only have one seat for, of, of five. So if we did run into a situation next year where we needed to use the appeals board, we would probably end up using Codes anyway. So something for you to consider. I guess since I didn't put it on the agenda legally, we can't do that. So think about it and I'll make sure it gets on the agenda for the, for the December nineteenth meeting. And then I think that's all I have.
Sure. Are we talking about tweaks to some of the ordinances?
Yes.
Is the solar power ordinance one of those? Because we had talked last year and the very, very beginning of this year about changing the percentage of land allowed for ground level solar. Because they're, because right now it's only about thirty or forty square foot. And that's really, it is kind of so restrictive that it doesn't make any sense.
It wasn't, but it could be.
Yeah, so it's just basically a percentage of the footprint. It's not saying that you can fit complete cover. We need, you all need to look at what percentage of it would make reasonable sense. Because like, we would, at one point talked about Lambert Hall putting a whole series ground. And when we looked at that ordinance, we found that it would be totally impossible the way the ordinance is currently written.
Right, right. Certainly, yeah, that could be something to look into. I don't get a lot of, the, the solar panel zoning applications that I get are typically for roofs and stuff. But, but yeah.
It's the ground, ground level issue that needs to be looked at.
Right, yeah. Could definitely look that. That was not one of them, but I could add that. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to current and old business. Yeah, you can add, most of this one's.
Thanks. First item is consider approval of the tentative twenty twenty-three budget. This again is tentative. We do the advertisement for public inspection with action on December nineteenth.
So I'll call for a motion to approve the tentative budget for twenty twenty-three to advertise and make available for the public inspection. The tax ordinance and resolution adopted and the budget approval will be considered at the December nineteenth council meeting. So we'll have a motion to, it will be approved, the twenty twenty-three budget.
I'll make that motion.
Cletton, discussion?
We're going to advertise it based on the discussions in the work session, using, you know, about seventy, almost eighty thousand of reserves to balance the budget. Again, it can be tweaked a little bit at the next meeting accordingly. But right now, we're going to put it together as, with a proposed no tax increase. And, you know, we talked about the pass-through increases from the Center County Refuge and Recycling Authority that will go through the refuse fund for.
Fee schedule.
Yeah, the fee schedule, sorry. I mean, the increases coming from that authority, it will go into the fee schedule for refuse billing and that kind of thing. Water and sewer will, that authority will meet on the thirteenth. We'll just, you know, they'll be, totally up to them whether they have an increase or not. We'll reflect that in the budget document that we have at the meeting on the nineteenth. I believe that's all the changes we're really going to show. We talked about some small changes to the fee schedule and the special, special event application. That can be done anytime during the year, but we're going to try to get it in place for the beginning of January twenty twenty-three.
Any questions for Ralph? Seeing none, I'll call for, we already have the motion, so, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor to approve the tentative twenty twenty-three budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries.
Next item is a wall collapse memo, which I don't have in front of me. But basically, my discussions with Pendot is there's only two options. One is in the spring, they're going to pour, they can pour a concrete wall and then tint it afterwards to match the wall, concrete wall that's on the left that goes from the collapsed section all the way to High Street Bridge or Veterans Bridge. This is what they typically do, only manor, not hold them up, not hold us up. But I, we do have a meeting scheduled for next week to discuss that. So I maybe have some details as to where they're at, at the next meeting, but that.
Their count strips are up now.
Oh, their, their count strips are up. Ours are obviously done and everything's... So that's kind of where we're at with the project.
One question. This is going to cost us money.
Yes.
I assume this is not in this next year's budget, correct?
That's correct.
So this is something that, and for twenty twenty-four, we may have to start thinking adding it is to create a reserve so that the year later, we would have enough money to do that as well as looking for grants, correct?
Absolutely. I have a note here about looking for supplemental funding. Really start that pretty soon, you know, and see what's out there.
Okay.
Any other questions on the traffic light? Seeing none, your follow-up, Dawn, on the accomplished period?
Yeah, I mean, we ordered the bagging machine from Frodo. I think it's Frodo Chopper and probably anticipate a spring delivery on there.
CCMPO, Ralph?
Well, this was a, from a meeting, a public meeting, that comments were asked for. And I believe Mr. Toasty Basie went to that hearing and maybe wanted to summarize your comments and then we'll submit them before tomorrow's deadline.
Okay, so basically, I talked, I initially talked about the, the wall collapse.
Okay.
And I said that one of the concerns that I had was that there are times when there are emergent issues coming up that the CCMPO could push up the ladder to Pendot. And I wanted to see something in the public participation plan that outlines those steps to make it easier for, usually municipalities, but I could also see a member of the public coming in and doing that. But it would be very helpful if, if that was clearly stated in the participation plan.
I can send a letter to that effect.
Yeah.
You have to understand, the MPO meets only five times a year.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not tasked to do emergency repairs. That is strictly up to Pendot and coordinating with that with the, in this case, Bellefonte Borough staff. So I, I'm happy, I'm glad you're going to do that.
Yeah.
But I think we're pushing the wrong, a little bit in the wrong direction for this.
With what you're saying with emergencies and getting to address them, what type of emergencies, I guess, would we need to add that type of thing?
So I'm saying that, emergent, some emergencies, that's with the, the wall collapse. That was an emergent. Is something that we see, that we say if we don't get something done relatively? soon, we would like, the MPO is the one who creates the tip. They're the, and I think if, if there's something that we could have community involved in saying, this is really super important, it goes through Doug and the rest of the MPO. But I believe that if there's something clearly stated, it's concrete in the plan, it would help the public and us know what the steps are to get that information up the ladder. Yes, they only meet five times a year, but I think...
And the tip is out to year 2025.
Right. But, but there may be other things that, that could be done. I don't know the details.
I wanted to clarify, you know, when this event happened on November 12th, Pendot was sending out information. They have a person that that's what they do.
Right. But that, like I said, I'm, emergencies, this is what triggered it in my mind, that I wasn't thinking when I, the public participation plan. Because that's too little, too late. It needs to be done something before we get to that point.
So I'm, I'm saying Pendot already does what you're asking.
Right. But it needs, but we need to have something, I think, in the plan, and the people that I talked with, the public agree that they could clarify that section of the plan a little bit more.
If that's what the council wants, we'll send a letter accordingly.
I have, we have a motion and a second to discuss adding options.
I thought we did that last time.
Okay. Well, it's on there again, so.
I do, I thought that's what we did last time, because there was a motion, and we did do it. It was just, we just needed to get...
We'll get that wording and send it in.
Following the script. Okay. Number eight, follow-up on the one-way signage on Ridge Street between Curtain Street and East Beaver. I have that here if you want to...
Well, I'll just try to summarize, you know, we had Mark Wood from, I left out the words LTAP, but it's from the LTAP, which is a local technical assistance program under Pendot. It's free to municipalities. This person comes in, looks at the situations, and gives us a write-up or a summary of what the recommendations would be. In this case, you know, there's a number of factors, the years it's been done, looking out for two-way traffic, space for cars being parked on both sides if it was two-way. Our opinion, after talking with our public works, because I think that was originally the motion, was to get a recommendation. We're, our recommendation, because the narrowness of the alley lane changes, we would propose to keep it as is at this point in time.
Okay. So at this point, there's really no action there to take, so we move on to new business.
Oh, I, I thought, it says, this is may take action. What I thought you were asking us was to have a motion to say, either to follow the, to not do anything at all, or did you want to have an additional study?
No, no. We don't want to do any studies, leave it as is. It, you know, the resident or someone came to council and asked about making it two-way. So this is the follow-up, the feedback.
So do we need, so my question then is, do we need a motion to, for the public record to say we will maintain it as a one-way street?
It's a little riser.
Just leave it as, I'll say, council decided not to change it.
Okay.
And we'll get a note out to the resident who brought it, brought it up. Okay, next in their new business, a letter of appreciation to you. Thank you to Pendot officials for mobilizing and fast-tracking temporary repairs to Route 150 South Water Street. Do you have a motion and second to approve that letter?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
That was Bernier and Johnson.
I just want to say that Pendot officials were great to work with. They kept us informed every step of the way. They sent out press releases every step of the way. We couldn't ask for any better cooperation, so a letter would be very worthwhile.
There's no draft yet of a letter.
No, I wanted to make sure, you know, get, get your approval. I'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those, approve the motion to send a letter as stated, the Pendot, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, sure. Next item, we put in the meeting schedule for 2023. We could even go to the next meeting if you want to look it over another couple of weeks. If you think it's good, you know, we, we'd ask you to approve it, and then we're going to advertise it, you know, accordingly. So we looking to narrow it down with, is this meeting or next meeting?
I just have one question about the Borough Authority meeting. It's scheduled for next year for November 7th, which is election day. Has that been the norm, or is that a conflict?
It actually has been the norm.
And there's, I, I was going to make a motion to amend, same thing, amend it to move their meeting on November 7th to November 8th, so it doesn't coincide with the election day.
But that conflicts the exact same time and date with the Industrial Development Authority.
Well, that...
Then you could do it, then you could do it on Thursday, because that's the way the note was written.
Well, how about I check with the authority, Doug and I...
I think the authority should have an input on...
We've never, we've never had another body tell them when they could meet. But anyway...
And maybe they're okay with that. That's the only conflict I could see with...
Yes.
How about the July 3rd date? Is that a conflict for anybody, the long weekend of July 4th? For here?
Fourth of July.
July...
July 3rd is a Monday, July 4th is a Tuesday.
Yeah, so does that, is that conflicting for, I'm, I'm fine with it, but some people...
It's a thought, I don't know. Because then we would move it to the 5th?
Probably.
Yeah.
Which we did a couple of times this year. We moved meetings off of, went holiday on, I made it to a Tuesday at least twice.
No, we go to a Wednesday.
He would have to go a half because...
Yeah, that's got to go on Wednesday.
No, this would go to a Wednesday.
Okay.
They think if they want a long weekend...
If we do, the, the one question...
I actually don't remember what Deb asked.
So the one question I have is, and we probably, based on this, we probably should wait and vote next time. But if we were to move the July 3rd to the July 5th, but we did it after we voted, we're going to have another advertising fee, just like we did this year for the Juneteenth.
Yes, I understand.
So we need to make a decision, one way or the other, whether it's going to be the 3rd or the 5th.
And you may not get CNET. They might have another obligation.
Yes, so, you know, we, we try to limit the amount of re-advertising, but occasionally it does happen.
Yeah.
So we should, we should find our CNET schedule?
Yeah, we, we can do that.
And then we can talk about it next time?
CNET, you got a schedule?
I don't think they're going to...
Those would be the only two, that would be the only real consideration, right?
What date is that? Wednesday, January, or July?
July 3rd, the 5th.
But yeah, you're moving it to...
Possibly.
Well, that's what I give them a date that they can go back and ask.
Well, I don't think they know. We got them.
Isn't that the same as the authority meeting?
First, we use the... We, we'll have to change it anyhow.
We usually bump, you know, when the council gets bumped, we bump the authority meeting, so...
So maybe it's not a good idea?
No, we'll, we'll see if we can...
Yeah, we'll change the authority meeting.
So we could still be on the 3rd, and they would be on the 5th.
Worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
We can see.
And we'll probably move ours to the next week.
We could do that.
Like we did this month.
That's up to council.
Yeah, they, they do it in December, every December. They go to the second or third Tuesday.
Interrupts my Christmas shopping.
Too many hunters.
Ah, yes.
That's what happens.
We'll hold till then.
We'll have an answer for you from the authority after, next week.
And CNET. We can check CNET.
Yeah.
Okay, so there are meeting schedules, so we'll put that on the next meeting agenda.
And then holidays are in here as well.
Holiday schedules, and we tried to capture everything, look it over, you know.
You did good this year. I will say that.
Oh, we're getting there. You keep adding new ones.
Off on all those days.
You did good.
So the borough doesn't close for all the federal holidays then?
Yeah. What, what happens is we follow the union schedule, union, I guess, pretty much, union agreement, just that the office does typically.
With the exception of the Department of the King Day and Juneteenth.
Well, we're open.
Yeah.
We're open, it's just that...
We changed the meeting.
...new dates are changed.
Yes.
So if we're, if the borough's not closed, why do we have to move our meetings on those holiday days?
It was something that was requested.
It was requested by residents, and so we moved...
We had a big boo-ha about two years ago.
So the residents requested the Juneteenth one?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think the borough celebrates Juneteenth? Just curious. Good question.
I, I don't think it's so much about the celebration, I just think it's, it's on there now, and that's what people, most, most businesses are doing.
Well, look it over, I mean, you're, you're going to approve the scheduling. So leave us now. Next item is a meet and greet with Senator Dush for tomorrow night. You know, we, we sent forward out the invitation to everybody, so...
How many people here are gone?
I can't track.
Just plus the three of us.
I'll be in the air. I'll be in the air somewhere.
Okay. Well, we can zoom in.
Oh, okay.
On that statement, though, Ralph has prepared a two-to-four-minute presentation of our...
That's what they gave us, a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the rest of council know. I haven't seen it yet. I'm excited to hear what it is, so Ralph is going to...
We can read it tomorrow, and then we can give you hints.
You want me to change it at the last...
We could add it before you, like we do the minutes.
I could do that.
That's what I say.
You may need that information sometimes.
Sure, I will.
Next item, consider goals and issues to be scheduled for 11/19/22. Pretty much, we are already at that, so I don't care.
Yeah, of course, we've been focused on the budget most of the fall. I, I will say we, you know, tried to put a lot of things off, and knowing that we'd have a tentative budget tonight, so we, I believe we still have the Stage, Cali-Ram Park Stage Performance Center update from the group that's working on that coming in on the 19th. I think we were talking...
Ann Mezner.
Ann Mezner from the county talked about that MPO update of some kind.
Right.
Is that a work session, or is that a meeting?
We'll have to work that out.
What would you...
If you can, like, give it maybe, if you can give it work session time, that would be great.
I think we can give her work session time.
The bench.
I'm sure Ann would appreciate that, you know.
Because I don't have to really, no, is there anything we need to discuss on the budget for work session?
Just a couple of minutes, well, you know, but not, we shouldn't need very much, because unless there's a change or something.
So we can give 15 of 15, and...
Probably. We, we've been talking with Mike Leakey, the architect that's helping us with the armory building across the street. We're, you know, we just now got digital plans developed on the layout of the, the building over there. So we probably won't be meeting with our committee till sometime in January as an update. But things are slowly progressing, just unfortunately, it's very slow. You know, there's just a lot of detail work that had to be done to this point.
So with the goals, I only got one page, either there's two pages that I may have missed or somewhere else, it wasn't in the package. Anyway, I would suggest, take this time, the rest of the year, and start looking over the goal sheets for formulating 23.
Yes. We took, we're taking a educated guess and putting some together as we typically do and put it in the budget document. So we'll, we'll have some ideas. Doesn't, doesn't mean that's a final copy.
It won't be complete.
Yes, but it's something to work with.
I have a question. It's not on the goals, but semi-related. We're supposed to be doing evaluations. I have not seen paperwork yet.
Their paperwork.
They're due today.
The chief?
Midnight.
All your, all your evaluations were due today.
Midnight.
Yeah. You sent it out, you sent them with the packet. I need it, because once I get it, then I can get it to council. And then we'll pick a date that will, basically, once you get it, you can do it and send it back in, but we'll, we'll put a place or date to it.
Looks like you and Ralph are staying late.
No, there's a computer, he worked from home.
Is it January?
No.
I have one thing for new business, too.
Yeah, you have the Level 3 chargers.
I do, I do. A gentleman called me and talked to me about Level 3 chargers, as I had said, and he's, he has a lot of information. But what he told me was there are possibly grants through Pendot for these, and it's just been released, or maybe not even released yet. So what I would like to do is have council approve having the administration and staff maybe look at possibilities with that and see what kind of criteria it is, and see if it is a possibility for Belfont. One of the things that caught my attention with that was with the Level 3 chargers, there is something built in for payment that you just, everything is done through your phone with these new chargers. So I thought that was interesting and addresses some of the concerns some of us have with them.
There's also going to be issues with where you're going to locate it, because it would take up parking meters.
Well, there, there are, apparently, there are limitations with this, but there's a lot of moving parts to it, and that's why we ask for, if you can get some information first. Yes, I'm making a motion to do that.
Then I'll second it for you.
Thank you. I thought you would.
Aye.
He wants to go home.
Well, there's a football game.
Tampa Bay.
So motion to have administration look at it.
Yes, please.
So the motion is to have administration look at the Level 3 charging stations. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sure. At this point, we have no executive committee, and so I will call for an adjournment.
Some...
Second adjournment.
All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Oh, I think that motion failed.